Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the Council to consider a public interest report of the local government and social care ombudsman. There is a statutory requirement that the public interest report be laid before the authority. I have therefore agreed for the matter to be considered by this special meeting of the full Council. Please be seated. All right. I am required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services, who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on the agenda item should use the microphone available. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? As previously stated, the only other item of business is to consider a public interest report of the local government and social care ombudsman. I will ask the Monitoring Officer to explain what this is and why we are here today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As previously stated, the only item of business is to consider a public interest report of the local government and social care ombudsman. And it is required by section 31 subsection 2 of the Local Government Act 1974. A copy of the report was sent out to members under separate cover on Friday the 23rd of March, immediately following the ombudsman publishing it. The Council is required to consider the report and then tell the ombudsman what action it proposes to take in respect to it. As I've said, this is a legal direction, it is not simply a decision of the Council to debate the report. It must be made for members for consideration, and that is the purpose of today's meeting. Public interest reports are, as the name suggests, made to raise awareness of complaints that the ombudsman believes are important to the wider public. The ombudsman can decide to make a public interest report if there are significant or widespread failings in dealing with a complaint, or in cases where a council indicates that it may not agree with the ombudsman's findings or recommendations. And it is the latter of these two that applies to the report that is before members today. Now, the report itself actually concerns an investigation into safeguarding matters that was undertaken in 2014 to 2050. The law has changed since the events of this case, but at the time, the Department of Health had issued guidelines to local authorities and other agencies under section 7 of the Local Authorities' Social Services Act 1970 about the action that they should take to protect vulnerable adults from various forms of abuse or harm. And the guidance was issued under the title 'No Secrets', it was issued in 2000. This made councils responsible for coordinating the consideration and investigation by relevant agencies into circumstances involving the risk of or the occurrence of actual harm to vulnerable adults. South Tyneside was a safeguarding authority and an active administration body in respect of a number of investigations into the abuse of vulnerable people as a result of a number of safeguarding alerts that were raised with the Council. For this case, a multi-agency, multi-disciplinary panel was convened, and it was considered by representatives from various organisations, including a care provider, an NHS trust, the Council itself, and the university. And the panel had health and social care professionals, together with legal and HR advisors. I can say elected members were not involved in the panel's work. So the report before members today details the ombudsman's findings in respect of that safeguarding investigation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will ask councillor Dixon to speak on the matter and move the motion. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may also speak or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members when we issue speak on the matter and move amendments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As lead member for independence and wellbeing, I would like to draw your attention to the report of the Monitoring Officer, which accompanies the ombudsman's public interest report and which brings some context to the complaint which we have discussed today. South Tyneside Council has an excellent track record in managing complaints, and this is the first time in a decade that this council has received a public interest report from the local government and social care ombudsman. Firstly, I wish to address the matter raised by the MP of South Shields, who has described the dispute as bizarre. I assume she has found the ombudsman's report, which is a method of trial, to have this debated. I also assume the ombudsman would advise the complaint that this is the process the council must follow. The findings the ombudsman has made in this report relate to some minor procedural fault, which did not influence the overall outcome. South Tyneside Council has never before had to deal with a public interest report such as the one presented today, where it is not being asked to pay compensation to a complaintant who is not a service user or customer, but is actually a perpetrator of abuse. Mr Y has complained about a service he has received during the investigation into abuse he received responsibility for. I would like to address the issue of confidentiality and anonymity, to remind members that Mr Y and other parties referred to in the ombudsman's report are entitled to remain anonymous during this process. The law requires the ombudsman to report without naming or identifying the complaintant to other individuals. Confidentiality and anonymity is being maintained by the Council. Elected members have had no involvement in the operational investigation and the ombudsman's complaint. In fact, it is the person identifying themselves to be Mr Y who has spoken to the media. It appears to me that the complaintant seems to have pushed this report to the public. It is only by Mr Y's complaint to the ombudsman that details of the abuse and now why he is known, four years on, Madam Mayor. The Monitoring Officer's report sends out some context, which I'm sure members have read, but in moving today's motion, there are some aspects that I wish to draw to members' attention for consideration while deciding whether to follow the ombudsman's recommendations. Firstly, members are not asked to consider whether Mr Y committed abuse. This has been upheld and is not challenged by the ombudsman. Abuse did occur. Before I take members through the key facts, members are reminded that the council did not take any dire action against Mr Y, but was acting in its role as safeguarding authority. The decision that Mr Y was a perpetrator of elder abuse was a decision of the multi-agency panel, not a decision of the council. This is a critical point. The council must facilitate an investigation that arrives at a decision, which has happened in this case, as the ombudsman states in his report. The safeguarding authority priority must be to protect vulnerable adults. Two completely separate complaints of abuse were brought by families unrelated to vulnerable people to a care home agency in South Tyneside against one of their employees, Mr Y. During that employee's investigation, further allegations, including homophobic language, were made by also lower and to other colleagues of Mr Y. As required by the independent safeguarding framework in place at the time, the council was alerted, as the administrating body, to coordinate a multi-agency response to investigate concerns and determine whether Mr Y had committed abuse. Professionals from a number of agencies heard information about their abuses. These professionals unanimously agreed that on the culmination of evidence, Mr Y had committed abuse. Mr Y disputed the allegations and engaged a solicitor to attempt to challenge the decision. Mr Y made accusations towards the two separate families, as well as against staff at the care agency. Following a lengthy labour process, where some delay was inevitable, the council agreed to continue subsequent meetings with professionals with the new chairperson, with no prior involvement in the case, which Mr Y intended, with his wife and solicitor. The council did offer to review this investigation and the allegations made by Mr B and Mr C, but Mr Y asked only for a review into the investigation into Mr C's allegations. Both Y two and other UCON meetings to review the investigation into Mr C's allegations, Mr Y had the full opportunity to present his views, most likely having his voice heard by an independent social worker. All professionals who were required to be part of the decision-making process once again unanimously upheld that Mr Y had committed abuse. It is my understanding that the independent social worker is not a decision-maker. Her remit in the investigation was solely to ensure Mr Y's views were represented at the UCON meeting in respect of one element of one of the allegations raised. The multi-agency panel unanimously upheld the decision that Mr Y committed abuse, having taken into account all of the evidence available today. Presumably, having exhausted safeguarding process and not proceeding with the legal challenge, Mr Y approached the local government and social care ombudsman in 2016 for complaint. The ombudsman looked into this complaint and did not challenge the conclusion of the multi-agency panel of professionals that Mr Y had committed abuse, or suggest any procedural fault that would have picked and acted on the overall decision. The ombudsman did not afford the complaint that staff threatened Mr Y, that his data was breached, that there was a vendetta against him or his wife, or that any of the council actions resulted in his love of work or learning. In fact, the ombudsman confirmed that the council, acting as their administrating body for safeguarding, was absolutely right to involve the new employer and university to doubt it could consider it ongoing risk to vulnerable people. As lead member for services to protect vulnerable older people from abuse, I recognise that we would like to conclude safeguarding investigations more quickly than occurred in this case. Good record-keeping is a key part of social care work, and this has to be carefully balanced with the delivery of frontline care and supporting difficult - sorry, in frontline care sometimes due to difficult and more contentious circumstances. The records that exist in this case are manually recorded, not filled in like we are today, and therefore they don't necessarily reflect the extent of delay of many discussions had by a range of professionals during these investigations, and the exact wording used for the ultimate decision-making. The ombudsman has highlighted this is the failing. That is his role to do so. However, I cannot and will not criticise any of the agencies involved, who reported finding Mr Y intimidating during his investigation, which Mr Y denies. Mr Y did himself contribute to the time it took to the investigation for this complaint, the investigation spanning a 24-month period, five major allegations throughout. We take complaints very seriously, our track record reflects this. If we get things wrong, we act to correct it, so that service users and customers can have confidence in us. However, in this case, I say to elected members, we have acted correctly, we have heard the complaint brought by families, we did implement the safeguarding arrangements in place at the time, we did alert subsequent employers as this was required us. And critically, we have protected our vulnerable people from further risk of harm by ensuring that Mr Y did not continue with service users. I have respect for the role of the ombudsman in his investigation in this case. He has rightly decided not to afford the material complaint that Mr Y has made. These include trying to cast the blame elsewhere, trying to suggest that each of the independently made allegations over an extended period of time was to put up all of the vendetta against Mr Y and his wife. It's just wrong. His colleagues had a professional obligation to report these incidents. The family acted to protect their loved ones. The Russell Moore had difficulty responsible for protecting victims from vulnerable harm, and they did this gravely. They must all be thanked for their role they have played in protecting victims from potential further harm. Thankfully, for the families who raised concerns, their complaints have been shown to be justified. We thank them for raising their concerns so that other families will not potentially suffer in the way that they have. If I can now turn to the ombudsman's recommendations, Madam Mayor. There are recommendations that the ombudsman has made, which my company colleagues and I find difficult to reconcile, namely, the recommendation to apologise to Mr Y for the administration fault the ombudsman has found, and paid £400 to Mr Y to recognise the impact of avoidable delay, distress, uncertainty, and for his time in trouble. Colleagues, I ask, what about the time in trouble of the families who bravely brought these complaints to the care agency? What about their distress? What about the distress of the vulnerable men that the multi-agency panel decided had been abused by Mr Y? The distress caused to the elderly person in his care who was swore at, the distress caused to members of different families who tried to intervene and who were shouted at, who were swore at, and who were intimidated. What about the distress caused to the victim of the alleged homophobic language, and the ongoing distress to the witnesses who were professionally and morally obliged to report this pattern of behaviour? I therefore propose the following motion. Members are to undertake a vote on how we respond to the ombudsman's recommendation, taking into account the public interest, the family interest, and most importantly, the interests of our victims. In this case, the elderly vulnerable people, who rely on us to safeguard them. My recommendation is that council ask officers to provide a copy of the current procedure and DBS to how we comply with current law and guidance to the ombudsman. I also recommend that we ask the Director of Children, Adults and Health to remind all relevant staff of the importance of accurately recording safeguarding meetings and decisions. However, my recommendation to council is we should not apologise to Mr Y, and we should not pay compensation of £400 to him. On this basis, my recommendations to council are that bullet point one and bullet point two of the ombudsman's recommendations are rejected, and bullet point three and bullet point four of the ombudsman's recommendations are accepted. Council ask the Chief Executive to undertake an internal review of the learning from this case, to provide members with assurance that procedures are compliant and fit for purpose. The findings of this review will be reported to the Selective Committee. All members are urged to reinforce their commitment to offering services for the most vulnerable and our communities, using the Making Safeguarding Personal Best Practice Guide, and to receive a further report on excellent work local agencies are doing to safeguard our most vulnerable people. Finally, Madam Mayor, safeguarding vulnerable people is at the heart of what this council stands for, and will send a strong message to abuses that this council will stand by if it is every single time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is the motion seconded? Wait.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the motion, my colleague. As lead member for children, youth, people and families, I do not accept the ombudsman's recommendation to either apologise or pay compensation to Mr Y. And I would like to echo councillor Dixon's stance to direct no criticism towards any agencies or council offices involved in this case. Safeguarding our most vulnerable people and investigating and preventing abuse must be the priority for all services. Any record-keeping errors should of course be minimised, and we have already learned from this. What message would it send to families if we were to apologise on behalf of all these agencies to this man who has treated our most vulnerable so shamefully? Having read the details of this complaint, it is clear to me who has stepped way beyond the boundaries of professionalism. The person who has stepped forward in the media to claim he is Mr Y flatly denies the claims, and notes not a shred of evidence has been produced beyond hearsay. We know that concerns were raised by multiple sources, including families, employers, care and health professionals, all of whom provided evidence as part of the investigation leading to the unanimous decision of the multi-agency panel. I understand Mr Y had a solicitor representing him for a while. If there was not a shred of evidence, I would have thought Mr Y would have brought a successful legal claim long before now. The ombudsman uses the term 'fault' to describe the failings in the case. I believe each one of us can see quite clearly where the fault lies, and that is not with the council, nor any of those agencies involved, who should actually be congratulated for their continued professionalism and service to the families. I ask members of the council, in casting their vote, to consider the morality of agreeing to pay compensation to Mr Y.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak or move amendment.
Right, councillor here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is to our Head of Legal Services, Mike Hardin, with regards to Mr Y. Mr Y was not employed by the council, he was employed by an organisation that we commission. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is correct. He was employed by -
I have researched some information with regards to disclosure and bearing, which considers people's fitness to work with vulnerable people. I have found the DBS guidelines definition of harm, and I would like to read it to my Harm may include sexual harassment, physical harm, financial harm, neglect, emotional harm, and psychological harm, and verbal harm. A person satisfies the harm test if they have harmed a child or a vulnerable adult, which has taken place, in this case of Mr Y. Could I ask the Monitoring Officer, was the DBS referred to, and were you satisfied with that when this case began?
Yes, I can confirm that this was referred to the Disclosure and Barring Service, both by the employer and by the council.
Thank you, Mr Hardin. Colleagues, we've heard from two of our colleagues this evening about the case against Mr Y. I would urge you all to consider this very, very carefully. And mind you, the perpetrator doesn't suffer half as much as the person that has been abused. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor here. Anyone else wish to speak? Sir Heatherington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In case, I think we must never ever leave sight of the fact that the council received allegations of physical abuse of an elderly vulnerable people by Mr Y, and the council then has a legal obligation to investigate that abuse. In the media over the weekend, it was noted with some sadness that the council cannot admit how wrong they were. It's clear from the reports that we've received and what we've heard here tonight, that the decision that Mr Y committed abuse was a unanimous decision by an independent, multi-agency panel of professional experts, following the lengthy investigations, and not a decision reached solely by the council. Therefore, to suggest that the outcome of these investigations was a council vendetta is completely misleading, it's a smokescreen, and it's shameful. Madam Mayor, the gravity of the allegations, the fact that they were upheld by the independent panel, the fact that the decision was not challenged by the ombudsman, in my opinion, far outweighs the minor procedural faults, and I use the word lightly here, faults, found by the ombudsman, which was totally unplanned, and the council did rectify those faults. Therefore, Madam Mayor, in all conscience, I cannot support payment of compensation to Mr Y. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? House of Commons.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I believe there's been no precedent where this council has been asked to pay compensation to a perpetrator of abuse. I would imagine the residents of South Tyneside would be horrified if we were to do so. I should also have thought persons who suffered the abuse and their families would fear with any move to pay the perpetrator as most distressing and inappropriate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, colleagues and members of the public. As a councillor and one member of this council, I see my duty is to serve the community and serve it as best as I can. And I take great exception to some of the claims by Mr Y over the weekend, or the man purporting or claiming to be Mr Y, in which he said that his wife had suffered a torrent of attacks from the council, of which I'm a member and all my colleagues are members, that there was a witch hunt. Can I just say, I'm one of the committees, I'm one of the chair, the People's Select Committee, it's about looking after young children and families, it's also about, you know, safeguarding issues and other issues. The party, the Labour Party, of which I'm a member, is founded on principles of fairness, and I certainly would not tolerate any witch hunt or any torrent of attacks by anybody upon anybody else. But what I will say in this particular case, is that Mr Y's own complaint has brought about this being made public. Nothing to do with the council, who withheld the information as they should have done, and the confidentiality was not breached by the council, but breached by Mr Y. So let him be hoist by his own petard, and the veracity of the councillors and the council statements and the council officers is as true as I'm standing here tonight. Thank you, Mr Hardin.
Sir, forward.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I've listened to my colleagues, and I've listened to the lead member, speaking about no vendetta. And neither should there be a vendetta, there doesn't need to be a vendetta, because what people have got to realise in this chamber, is it's the councillors and the officers of this council who are the custodians and the safeguarding of our the most vulnerable in our society, and that is not only the adults, but the children as well. Whilst I say we are the custodians, what we have to remember, it is everybody's responsibility. In this borough, when I say everybody's responsibility, I mean everybody's responsibility. Whether it be Mr Y's wife, or anybody else, it's their responsibility to report any attack on the most vulnerable in our society. I think we seem to be missing the point here. Mr Y wants an apology. Well, I for one would not be given an apology, and I'm sure every member in this chamber would not be given an apology. Mr Y wants compensation. Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's a public purse, and the public are the ones responsible for that purse. We are elected members to be responsible for that purse, and we shouldn't be giving him compensation. The last thing, Madam Mayor, is I'm ashamed. I am ashamed, because what this case does, having been brought to this chamber, it puts it in a public arena, and it puts a taint, a taint of shame, not only on every member of this council, every officer of this council, but for every - but for every person in this borough to be saying that they are victims of vulnerable people who are victims in this borough and we are expected to apologise and pay. Well, I'm sorry, Mrs Madam Chair, it will not happen while I'm here.
Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Gibson, right.
From the victims' from victims and the families' perspective, this happened over four years ago. The victims didn't bring it to the media's attention. Mr Y did, through the Ombudsman. Also, however, I would like to bring the attention of the members that publicly, the victims are publicly being victimised and questioned about the authority, the answers they have given. So I would expect to debate today would be a fair and transparent way, as we always do in South Tyneside, we have a fair and open transparency and we think we are people at the heart of it. But at the end of it, I would like to ask the families to ask the local police to thoroughly investigate this matter, because this is absolutely despicable and it's brought tension of the borough, fantastic borough, a star-winning borough for social, healthy care. I'm sorry, but I would not support giving this man the money. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Dixon, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Yes, I'd like to, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to thank the members for their persistence and obviously for the support that the council and the other agencies have given to the council.
Great.
Move the vote, Madam Mayor.
Great, thanks. A name vote on whether or not the motion is agreed. Great, thank you. Well, in fact, if anyone's seen it, I keep seeing who else and they're coming forward.
Five more members to support a name vote? Members could raise their hands.
Name vote. I will ask the head of legal services to conduct the vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A copy of the motion has been circulated to members. We will have that in front of you. The name vote will be conducted in the usual manner. I mean, reading out the names of each member in alphabetical order. And if, when I call your name, you can indicate whether you are for or against the motion or you are abstaining. So let's start beginning with Counselor Hamar. Counselor England?
For.
Counselor Atkinson?
For.
Counselor Bauer? Counselor Boyer?
For.
Counselor Brady?
For.
Counselor Claire? Counselor Cunningham?
For.
Counselor Dick?
For.
Counselor Dix?
For.
Counselor Dixon?
For.
Counselor Donson?
For.
Counselor Duncan?
For.
Counselor Ellison?
For.
Counselor Flynn?
For.
Counselor Foreman?
For.
Counselor Gibson?
For.
Counselor Hay?
For.
Counselor Hetherington?
For.
Counselor Hobson?
For.
Counselor Hughes? Counselor Huddling?
For.
Counselor Keegan?
For.
Counselor Kerr?
For.
Counselor Kilgaren?
For.
Counselor Lewis?
For.
Counselor E Malcolm?
For.
Counselor I Malcolm?
For.
Counselor K Maxwell?
For.
Counselor N Maxwell?
For.
Counselor NE Maxwell?
For.
Counselor McKay?
For.
Counselor Q?
For.
Counselor McMillan?
For.
Counselor Mellain?
For.
Counselor Peacock?
For.
Counselor Perry?
For.
Counselor Portas?
For.
Counselor Crowe Block?
For.
Counselor Puntin?
For.
Counselor Purvis?
For.
Counselor Sewell? Counselor A Smith?
For.
Counselor M Smith?
For.
Counselor K Stevenson?
For.
Counselor S Stevenson?
For.
Counselor Strike?
For.
Counselor Townsley?
For.
Counselor Traynor? Counselor A Walsh?
For.
Counselor M Walsh? Counselor Welsh?
For.
Counselor West?
For.
Counselor Wood?
For.
Let's see the numbers, Madam Mayor.
So the motion is agreed unanimously. I would like to ask the leader to say a few words about today's proceedings.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think everything that needed to be said this afternoon has been said quite readily by Counselor Dixon and Counselor Atkinson. Today is not, hasn't been a pleasant afternoon for South Tyneside council. I feel extremely sorry for the victims of abuse. And I hope that today's proceedings, where we have stood by them and their families and have rejected the Ombudsman's recommendations in regards apologising and making a payment to Mr Y, goes somewhere to easing the pain of the victims and the families and assure the public that the council really do take seriously our safeguarding responsibilities in partnership with external agencies as we are required to do by law. That we will take on board the Ombudsman's recommendations in terms of tightening some of our procedures because of the, some of the minor procedural errors that will be in this matter, although I know it did not in any way affect the overall outcome of the safeguarding panel. But to thank all members for taking the time to consider this report. I accept it has been distressing for members to read and to have to take part in today's debate, but it has been extremely necessary in order to bring some closure for the victims and their families for the abuse that occurred under, by Mr Y. And for that reason, I close the debate slightly.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. That concludes business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.